Welcome everyone to our regular scheduled April meeting. If you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for all being seated. Madam Flood, you call a roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Bullock.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Chimplin.
President.
Counselor Finacy.
He's excused.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Credit.
Here.
Counselor Matson.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Nyhan.
He's excused.
Counselor Pierce.
Here.
Counselor Rice-Hawken.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. We do have the minutes before March 14th, 2022 before us. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, second to approve the minutes of March 14th, 2022. Is there any comments, questions, concerns, saying none, ready for the vote? All neighbors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the motion is adopted. That takes us to our friend Counselor Kennison. Will you join us? How are you, Counselor? Huh? You enjoyed your time on the phone. There was no hesitation there, was there? Well, we have Resolution 9433. A recognition of the services of Linda Kennison. Whereas Linda Kennison faithfully served the city of Concord, New Hampshire, as a member of the city council for intermittent terms starting in 1987 through December 31st, 2021. And whereas during said period, she has devoted innumerable hours and unending efforts in citizens, in service to citizens of Concord, encouraging democratic involvement and participation in local government decision-making by assuring that all voices were heard and treated with respect and courtesy. And whereas she has helped to provide governance, to help build the city's financial strength, and whereas Linda Kennison performed diligently on behalf of the city of Concord, serving on seven boards and committees during her tenure, and her favorite would be parking, as a city councilor, most recently serving on the community development advisory committee.
Only because I have his chair.
The parking committee, the regional utility utilization committee, and tax exemption policy committee. Whereas she has distinguished herself during the city council deliberations by her integrity and passion for the citizens of Concord. And whereas she has earned the respect and confidence of her many friends and associates in city government who have been privileged to know her and to work with her. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Concord City Council, the citizens of the city of Concord, as well as the members of city staff, do hereby record our appreciation for her years of service and commitment to the city of Concord, promoting the community's welfare, our esteem for her abilities, and our respect for her high character. It's passed city council February 14th, 2022. Congratulations. As always.
Carolyn, don't step on him. That'd be like an OSHA thing.
When you chat, when you chat, I'll fix it.
Kind of like winning the Oscar.
I'm ready for the slap.
Well, thank you for those kind words. I really appreciate it. It's been a privilege serving with all of you. You know, working for the betterment of the city. And it's a great city. I can't think of any other place I'd want to live. I'm here in '64.
But you didn't start serving until '89.
I was busy raising a lot of little kids. Yeah. I remember when we moved here, the downtown folded up at five o'clock at night. There was nothing. Nothing downtown. And look at it now. And that's, you know, because of progressive city management and the council and the policies. I really want to recognize Tom, the city manager, who's such a creative and forward-looking individual. Proactive and rather reactive. And he comes before us with so many options to choose from. And is right on top of what's going on in the, in the country. And our esteemed mayor, Jim Blay. The greatest ambassador the city of Concord has ever had.
Low is a low bar.
And Janice Bonifant, our city clerk, who runs a very efficient office and elections. Thank you all three and all of, all of the counselors. What else do I want to say? Oh, I, I do want to thank the residents in Ward 6 who have shown their confidence in me by voting for me several times to represent them on the council. Truly honored by that. There are a couple of counselors that I want to bring your attention to. One of them isn't here tonight. That would be Keith Nyhan and Byron Champlin. Byron and I enjoy many meetings. Share good life habits.
Thank you.
And Keith Nyhan, he always has Tylenol at the ready. Especially for these, these, like, project meetings. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, he's still fixing it.
Finally putting that Alex.
I thought he was calling us to order. All right, last shot.
I thought you were gathering.
Hold it.
We're a frugal community.
All right, if, if it doesn't work, I'll bring it in. Or are you gonna have to run again? Sorry.
Or do you want to run again?
There's one thing I forgot to say. Jim, you know I do this all the time. Yes, I want to, I hope that our new counselors, Counselor Brown, Counselor McLaughlin, will enjoy their time on the council as much as I did. It's a real learning experience. So, thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, that takes us to a couple of presentations. The first presentation we'll have is by Catch Neighborhood Housing. So we have Tom and Alex Wilson, or just Tom. All right. Mr. Fattato, how are you, sir?
Very well. How are you?
Welcome to the city council.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I have a few, just a handout here if anybody wants to take a seat. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Tom Fattato. I'm with Catch Neighborhood Housing. And I want to thank the city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Respel for having me here today. I'd like to provide an update to our most recent project called Rosemary's Way on Village Street in Pennacook. The most important thing about tonight's presentation is really to say thank you to all of you. The city council, city management, as well as all of the city staff. I cannot tell you what a pleasure it's been to deal with everyone at city hall and at various departments. I'm sure everyone's aware of the demand for housing, not only in the city of Concord, but throughout the state. And most importantly, affordable housing. What we do at Catch is, our mission is to create communities where every person is confident of a safe and affordable home. We believe that this latest project is a great example of how we can accomplish that when affordable housing developers like Catch can work together with the city to achieve a common goal. Again, I'm here to express my thanks, not only to you, the counselors, but the planning board, the zoning board, and the entire staff. Throughout the project, we worked closely with planning, code enforcement, and engineering, and everyone was a pleasure. The staff in each department worked hand-in-hand with not only us at Catch, but our construction team. And they, they worked hard to achieve every goal that we had, and we finished that project ahead of schedule and ahead of budget. And a lot of that goes to the work that we had with the city. Additionally, you may remember, you play a very important role in that project as you sold us a parcel that the project sits on. Affectionately noted as the former water tower project, before my time here in Concord, but everyone here seems to know where that was. We're grateful for the partnership and for the support for creating that new community. I'll tell you a little bit about Rosemary's Way if I could. So Rosemary's Way, first of all, named after our former CEO and president, who passed away suddenly just about a year and a half ago. That consists of six buildings with 42 residential apartments. There's 31 units that are defined as affordable by HUD's guidelines, and then 11 market rate units in one, two, and three-bedroom configurations. Construction was completed in January, again ahead of schedule, and we began moving residents in in February. Currently, there's 27 families that call Rosemary's Way their new home. For that, we're very proud. And we expect to lease the remainder of those units in the next coming months. Funds and financing, how do you build affordable housing in this day and age? Not as easy as it sounds. We utilize something called the low-income housing tax credit program through HUD, and that provided us the necessary equity to do the project, as well as conventional construction financing with Eastern Bank and conventional permanent financing financing through New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. As you can imagine, these types of funds don't, they come with very stringent rules and regulations. Compliance with these regulations is no easy task. An example of this is the fact that, to date, we've received and processed over 200 applications for an apartment. And that was to put 27 families in. Qualification process is incredible. Statistics like that demonstrate what an effort it takes to lease and to manage the project. And my hat's off to our staff at Catch, as well as the staff of other affordable housing developers around the state and around the country, actually. We always joke that it's much easier to build a housing development than it is to own one, and that's a good example. I would point out the handout I just gave, it just has a little bit of an example. We're always, we're always asked the question, how do you, who qualifies for affordable housing and how do I qualify? Well, it's very easy. I'm sure everybody realizes that there's a maximum income limit in order to qualify for affordable housing. But there's another factor that's often forgotten, and that's the minimum income level. The maximum, the minimum that's used is 40% of your gross monthly income. And this creates a very small range between the minimum you need to earn to afford the rent and the maximum by HUD guidelines. In many cases, it's a $7,000, $8,000, or $9,000 range. So you have to find individuals who fit into that very specific range of annual income. The example in the handout that I gave you is for a two-person household in a two-bedroom affordable apartment. And they would be in the 60% class of the area median, median income for Merrimack County. So they would need to earn $38,000 as a minimum, but no more than $45,000 as a maximum to be able to afford that rent, that monthly rent of $1,190. My intent wasn't to bore you guys with statistics, but really to say thank you to everyone here, everyone on the staff at the city that really worked hand-in-hand to help us get that project up and running and home to 27 families and soon to be 42. Happy to answer any questions that you have about the project. If not, just a thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Fattato?
Thank you so much for coming out and especially for providing some of these statistics on the city side. Would you believe that this range, this income range, really hits our first-year teachers? Our first-year police officers? And so we're really talking about a segment of our community that really gives back tenfold for what they provide to services in our community. So I appreciate that Catch Neighborhood Housing provides such housing for these critical providers in our community. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Sam, I just wanted to thank you also because during this process, I think that Catch and you personally made extra efforts to reach out to the community and the public. I know that the construction teams that you had working there on-site also were very helpful, talking to butters and the construction schedules, and you can imagine the disruptions and so forth. But I heard a lot of generally positive feedback about that, which is great. So I think Catch really did a great job being a great neighbor in the community as well going forward with this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Anyone else? I just want to add to this. I've been, you're a great partner for the city, and we've done many successful projects now together. And I, you continue to be, I'll say, a partner. I very much appreciate that. I, I'm, I'm really grateful you brought this as well. And I'm curious, if you happen to know off the top of your head, how much was it per unit to, to build this project, you know?
It was, without getting exact numbers, because I don't remember those.
Just round numbers, right?
We're probably in the $260,000 range.
So I think that's an important number to really talk about as a city, because one of the things that we all know across the state of New Hampshire is the need for affordable housing. And I think that it's important that without partnerships between government and the non-provost sector, et cetera, that this is a fairly steep price to be trying to build affordable housing. So it takes everybody to, to make this happen, and I, and I, that number is a big number, so.
Certainly is. And, and it's getting larger every time the construction materials increase. These projects could not happen without the low-income housing tax credit program. That provided $7.2 million in equity for the project, and then we financed another three and change. So all that to support an $11 million project.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, the next person I'd like to recognize is our city planner, Heather Shank. And as she comes up here, I first want to start with an apology. And thank you for your patience for the last time. I'm sorry you had to stay as late as you did. That's my fault, and I'm sorry for that, but I want to make sure you were first, so we're 18 minutes in and you're, you're on, so.
It's fine. It's excellent. I appreciate it.
And then the last thing I would just like to say is I've had the opportunity, I think some of the counselors may have had the opportunity to see your presentation that you did for the community, and I, I just want to acknowledge that I thought it was extremely informative, and I was glad that people were able to participate, so look forward to your, tonight.
Great. Thank you. So thank you for having me. I'm Heather Shank. I haven't quite met all of you since, since I've been here last. So I'm here to talk about the update to the zoning ordinance, which we're referring to, we have been referring to as Concord Next. I'm going to talk about Phase Two tonight, and the kickoff that we had last week, a few weeks ago. But I just wanted to give you sort of an overview, because I know when we started this a few years ago, there were different phases around the table. So I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, at that time, I had met with all the counselors, either individually or in groups of two or three, and I let them know in more detail what was, what this project was about. And so I just wanted to extend that offer to any of you who may be interested in sort of a refresher of summarizing that, the entire project in, in Phase One in particular, but also the new people who I've never had, who have either never met or never had a chance to go over this project with. So extend that. Please feel free to reach out to me, and I'd love to give you more information about the project.
Before you hit, before you hit your first slide, can I just ask you to take the microphone and move it a little more towards?
So we can hear you. It's behind your computer.
You can just take that one. The one that's behind you is sort of.
Oh, like this one?
Either one. Doesn't matter.
How about all of them?
Well, that makes us stereo.
You'd have to, you'd have to sing at that point.
Don't get power-hubbed.
Don't, don't invite me to do that. I'm not that shy. So, oh yeah, that's better. So I just wanted to give you just an overview of the entire project, why are we, why we're doing this, and what were some of the initial goals for the, for the entire thing. So essentially, the bottom line was we wanted to create a more developer-friendly, development-friendly code. It was to encourage redevelopment, address the housing issues, which we've heard a little bit about tonight, transition to graphic code, which can be easier for people to understand and also a little more engaging, simplify the, the plan review process for smaller projects, and modify the dimensional standards, which is kind of like an underlying directions for the, for the districts to better reflect the existing patterns of development, which in theory will help people with development with, with fewer variances. So Phase One was really looking at the entire city. It restructured the code into a different form that we're calling Form-Based Code. There's some graphics there showing you what some of the pages look like. So, and this really coded for the existing areas that we already know what type of development we want, what type of development we have. We're not looking to make any huge changes in these areas, but we are trying to encourage more pedestrian-friendly, better streetscapes, and more, more aesthetic, you know, focus on aesthetics. So this is what, where we modified the dimensional standards, modified standards to encourage housing, and we simplified the use in parking tables, which was pretty huge. They went from like, you know, 25 pages to three or something like that. So the review of Phase One, it should be happening very shortly. I'm just finishing up the review with, with legal, and that will have a separate outreach process where I'll have public meetings to tell people what's in there and get feedback for that. So that will be separate, a separate process over the next, you know, six or eight months. Phase Two, which is what we just kicked off, is looking at targeted districts. So I added this map to show you the, the areas that are colored are the areas that we're looking specifically at. So this is just to sort of show you, you know, we've done the whole city. This is going to be a much quicker process that is going to look at specific districts and specific areas, which we don't have a vision for, which maybe aren't in our master plan for new types of development, new types of housing, new types of patterns. So what we're doing right now, what we just finished a few weeks, a few weeks ago with the web conference, was visioning for redevelopment. And so we're looking at new design concepts for multi-unit residential areas, which you may see are the green areas. We're talking about sort of the high-density areas that are outside the downtown area. Local commercial areas, which really refers basically to Fisherville and Loudoun Road. Regional commercial areas, which are our gateway performance districts. So that's like the mall, Fort Eddy, those types of big regional commercial areas. And then a new district is kind of the more interesting one to me is a new district that would be flex industrial areas. And those are sort of to capture, it's, it's a new district in the sense that it's sort of And those are sort of to capture, it's, it's a new district in the sense that it's sort of redefining the opportunity, the Office Park Performance District, I'm sorry, the OFP, which was originally created for office parks, which nobody's creating anymore. So it's, it's an attempt to create a district with uses that we don't allow currently. And there was some positive feedback for that. So I just threw some images in here to show you the types of precedents that we went through, that we showed to the community a few weeks ago. So for the multifamily housing, this here's showing you, single family in the lower left, which, they're on very small lots, but those are single-family homes. And the upper right is townhomes, and the lower right is duplexes, which looks like single-family homes, but those are actually duplexes. Here's some more images of multifamily housing, different patterns. These are sort of in opposition to the garden-style apartments, the sort of suburban, you know, buildings surrounding a parking lot model. So these are some options, alternatives to that type of model. Here's the local commercial areas that we were looking at. These are intended to be precedents for Fisherville and Loudon Road. So you can see it's, you know, similar types of development, but with much more emphasis on streetscape treatment and relationship to streetscapes and pedestrian access. And again, these are two more images for those types. You can see the image on the, on the right, that actually is a four-lane road, similar in width to Loudon Road. It's just that the relationship and the characterization of the streetscape and the relationship to the road is completely changed, and it allows a different type of development to occur there. A much higher density development, which is much more, you know, higher value because of putting, you're putting more stuff on the lot. So then we looked at the development, the regional centers. So this, on the left is basically the mall, the mall prototype. On the left, you can see an old, an old, you know, sort of derelict mall, and on the right is the same site. And you can see the context of, of that site is surrounded by big-box commercial and parking lots, and yet they were still able to create, you know, through a street grid network going through that site, create grids and blocks, they were able to create this. So you see that picture on the upper left, that's that site. So it's very different than what you think of as maybe just a pad redevelopment of, of a site. This is actually an integrated, comprehensive, new type of development. All these are images from that location. And then finally, this is the last model, which we're looking at, I've mentioned, looking at different uses that we don't currently allow. So this is more like a, a place that would allow like a live-work type unit. So it's, I'm calling it Flex Industrial. So it would still allow for light industrial uses that we, that we do allow in some of these industrial areas, but it would also allow housing, and it would also allow a different mix of uses that are maybe more reflective or responsive to needs today, the desires of, of young people today. So what you're showing there in this, in this particular district is a brewery and then housing. These are in the same district in proximity to each other. So the housing on the bottom is actually live-work units. So the bottom are almost like maker spaces or workspaces, and then there's housing on the top. And then the picture on the upper right is just showing that these types of spaces can function in multiple ways with different activities. So these are the four steps in this phase. We just, as I just went through the Step Two, which is the visioning over here. So Step One, I went through with the consultants already. Step Two, oh, can you see the mouse? I guess you can't on the big screen, never mind. Step Two, we just did the visioning, and now we're moving into Step Three. So we're still in Step Two in the sense that I'm still promoting these videos that are available online, and I want people to watch them and comment and give feedback. But the consultants are starting work on Step Three, which is the design concepts. They took these different sites in all of those different four areas, and they're going to be actually, based on the feedback that we're receiving, that we received from the conferences and that continues to come in, they'll be developing some graphics of what these types of things will actually look like in Concord. So they're going to actually be doing some type of master planning designs for these locations. The Southern Opportunity Corridor, in particular, they'll be looking at street interconnections, street networks, like some ideas for knitting those spaces together. So this is the schedule that we're on right now. The, we just, Step Two, which was the visioning, it says initial education, but that was the visioning. We just had this workshop in the end of March, and they're moving into designing those particular sample site locations. And they're going to be ideally coming back in the end of June for another series of web, web conferences. Phase Four is basically drafting the actual code. That's the boring part of writing the stuff down and putting it all into a document. And then we'll be going back to the community with Phase Four as well to say, hey, you know, especially legal, how, how is this working for us? And then at the end of that, ideally, in the October-November range, we compile the two documents. So my goal is that throughout the, this, this period until October-November, I will be also going out with Phase One and going over that draft and getting feedback on, on those things while the consultants are finishing up Phase Two or, or going through Phase Two. With the goal, obviously, of compiling both and, and having it adopted in the end. There's only two phases, by the way. So there is a website, ConcordNext.info. There's an online survey that, that people can fill out. I encourage anyone to fill out the survey. And they can also just give feedback online. So that's, that's where we're at. And I'd be, I'll take questions if anybody has any.
Any questions? That was easy, but.
It was a lot of information.
No, I would encourage everybody to go to fill this out, and there's opportunities to actually voice your opinion in terms of, think of the different styles and types and.
Yeah, there, so the, the, the actual videos are about, how long are they? 60 to, 60 to 80 minutes, some are 90 minutes, in their polls throughout the video. So you can go and see the polls, and then you can submit the online survey, you know, fill them out, basically, or just give feedback. Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to see a lot of you soon.
Yes, I'd like to come. Have fun. So we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda. Before I take a motion, I will simply note that Items 18 and 25 have been removed from the consent agenda. I'll also note that Council Brown is accusing herself from Item 15 and Item 17. So with those two, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made second to approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone else who wants to take anything off, or we all said? Seeing none, write the question on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
All votes, and the ayes have it. Consent agenda is adopted. That takes us now to our public hearings, and Madam Clerk, Item 33A, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I General Code, Chapter One Government Organization, Article 1-5 Fees, Fines, and Penalties.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the council, the city has for several years carried the Engineering Inspection Fund, Fund, as you know, Fund 21, as a means of accounting for engineering division inspection time on private development projects. This practice has afforded the Engineering Services Division the ability to offset staff expenses from the general fund by budgeting anticipated inspection revenues through the fund. Unfortunately, the practice has become increasingly problematic for a variety of reasons, and the city administration would like to move forward with the elimination of Fund 21 and fold the expenses and revenues currently accounted for Fund 21 into the general fund. Engineering services fee changes proposed herein would provide greater transparency, reduce the need to bill after the fact, and be compatible with the, with the NRGov online permitting system anticipated to go on live, to go live this year. The proposed fee structure incorporates a tiered inspection approach to allow engineering to mimic the city's building permit process, where payment is calculated based on reasonably accepted metrics and a payment system front. A critical aspect of the process is to maintain responsible fees and charges that are adequate to support the delivery of city services. I recommend the approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager of this item? Seeing that, we'll open the public hearing. Any wish to testify on this item? Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Angie Raymond from Raymond's Landscaping. So we do a lot of business within the city, and we do several different permits throughout the year. So I will agree that their system is broken. The Fund 21 sometimes taken me almost nine months to get my money back from the city when they overestimated. And they're usually pretty quick about billing, because we also hold a state excavation contract, so therefore they bill them after the fact. They don't hold a retainer like we do several other places. So for long and short, I agree that some of these need to get changed, but there also is a lot of muddy water now in this new ordinance that they're trying to propose. For example, in Sun Community, Jensen, the mobile community there, we do, every time we take down a house and put in a new house, we have to then apply for a new water, new sewer permit. The inspectors come out for maybe all of 10 minutes. They take their measurements and they say, okay, yep, you're good to go, and then they leave. I pay right now $160 per connection fee. So for water, I pay $160, for sewer, I pay $160. That'd be $320. With the new system, now it's going to be $255 per application for the same amount of time. However, when we do, we did a valve replacement right up by Clinton Street Courthouse. That project took us about a week. So I understand that we can always estimate how much time it should take us to do one, but then you have rain, you have weather, you have, the hole's too big, the hole's too small, the products aren't here, whatever, there's all kinds of variables. So I agree that it's not always easy for them to calculate their hours after the fact. However, the way the new, the way this new system's written is a tier system. So if I have, if I say, yep, okay, my guys are going to be on a job site for four days, eight hours a day, because that's a normal workday. Right now, I would then be paying for a full day of inspection and a minimum of four hours overtime, because a full day of inspection only covers seven hours with one hour administrative every day. So now I'm going to be paying for four hours of overtime when it's a normal eight-hour Can anybody answer me on why? Is that how it's going to be, or is that just my interpretation of it?
This, this is an opportunity for you to actually tell us how you feel about it.
I, and I don't feel that that's right. Like, that shouldn't be, an eight-hour workday isn't uncommon. I'm not docking their lunch. I shouldn't have to keep track of like their lunch breaks, so I can penny-for-penny say, okay, they're only there for seven hours and two minutes. But I get that they need to account, you know, for some of their administrative time, but it's not clear in here. Like, it's, on a big project, I'm going to have the same inspector on the site, and then he's going to leave throughout the day, and he's going to go check on this site, he's going to go check on that site, he's going to go check on other sites, and then he's going to come back. Because he doesn't need to be on one single site every single hour for every single day. If we're laying a water line, he's going to be there when we tap into the main line, and he's going to be there when we do the curb stop, and he's going to be there when we tie into the building. He's not going to be there the entire time I'm digging the trench or I'm doing this. But this new tiered system doesn't seem to accommodate for, it doesn't, it leaves a lot more gray area than it does answers for me, as well as, right now, permit for driveways. All your driveways have to have a paved apron. Once you put in a driveway permit, you have to have a paved apron. So are they now going to charge me $75 for my driveway and $75 for my asphalt minimum fee? Because it's paved. Are they going to double dip on that aspect? And that was, that was pretty much all that I had for that, because, like I said, I agree that the Fund 21 system is broken and it is, does not work. And I have a customer that we finished his work for, mm, almost a year ago, and he still has not got his retainer back, because poor Jessica, she's amazing, but she cannot figure out how to release the money, because, like I said, that system is broken. And I agree with that. They also require you to have a bond for every job you do. For me, I currently have 10 bonds open in the city right now. That's every time I do any street work. There's a lot of other cities that are throughout the state that do one bond. You permit once a year, you go to them, you say, okay, here's my blanket bond for $10,000, $5,000, $50,000, whatever they want to do, depending on the amount of work you're going to do, and that should be it. I shouldn't have to keep going to get a new bond every single time I dig within the road. It's just kind of a, it could streamline a lot of that other headache process, because then I have to provide a bond every time I do a different piece of work. If I dig in the sidewalk, if I dig in the street, if I dig right next to the sidewalk, I still have to get a bond.
Any further? Any questions? No, 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 no. Anything, don't worry. Councilwoman Spears.
Quick question. Thank you very much for bringing this. In addition, you have to get permits too, right? For all these? Okay.
Yep. So right now, like, here's the current permits right now that are not online, that are, that they're supposed to be going online, but they're still not. Like, a driveway permit, right here, if you're within the driveway without sidewalk or curb impact, it's $75, at their discretion. Because I have a driveway right now that we put in on a dirt road, no impact to the road, no impact to sidewalk, and they still charge the owner $225. Because sometimes engineering says, wow, you're going to have to need a culvert, so that's an impact. Is it really, or is it just a case-by-case? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. On for your, hold on, I gotta get the right, next one now. For excavation, they also have a damage fee. So there's impact fees. So when I cut in a road, depending on how new or how old the road is, I not only have to pay that, the fee of $220, but I also have to pay impact fees of either $5 per foot or infrastructure $250 per foot, and then it goes by the number of years, which I completely understand, again. I'm not trying to be irrational, like, I get it, if it's a new road, I don't want it dug up. I don't want to dig it up, because then I don't want to mess up a nice new road. But it sometimes happens. And that's another additional, like, we're guessing at the square footage, because sometimes I can say, I'm going to dig a hole right here that's five foot by five foot, and then I get there and there's something under the ground, there's a gas line that they didn't, that we didn't know was there, so we have to move it. So that's always been a, for us, because we do a lot of work, I go in after and I say, okay, Jessica, I had 57 square feet, here, here's my check. But that's just how, because we do a lot of work within the city, but it's not, it's not a clear system either, because you never know, because it's excavation work. Like, you can, you can kind of guess at a lot of this stuff. Incumbrance permit, here's another one, that's another $75. That's there. We have to submit a traffic control plan, we have to tell them what we're doing, why it's, why we're blocking it. So if I'm working on, for example, a steam line broke that went through the walkway and the road, but we didn't have to dig up the rockway until after we dug up the road, because we didn't realize that the steam line repair went all the way back. So then I have to do multiple other, multiple other permits that are all stacked onto each other. And then there's a utility, that I have to have my bond on there, and then it's $160. So if I tie in a new house and their water, their sewer, and then if there's any storm, stormwater connections, anytime we repair, replace, or do a new one.
Just a quick follow-up. And these increased costs, you're forced to pass on to the resident or person for whom you're doing, with whom you're doing the work?
That's correct. So if these go into effect on July 1st, I'm bidding that work right now. I'm not going to wait until June to go bid this work, you know, that we have to be a couple months out. So if this is going to go into effect June 1st, it needs to be clear, so I can then relay it to all my customers, because that's not that far away. In the, you know, in the construction world, that's not, that's the middle of our season. So if that's going to be, if these are going to be in place, then we need to know about it and be able to foresee it now, or put it off until the beginning of next year, where then it's not going to impact me directly, and I'm not going to get stuck with these, because I've already bid the job out based on what their current, current fees are.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do, do you do work in other cities?
Yes.
What is, what is your experience with this type of, in some other cities?
Um, there's, so the only other city that's pretty close, and that's what I, and that, well, I shouldn't say it's pretty close, it's that Nashua has, and I hate to say this, because Nashua has, they're following a Mass, Massachusetts protocol, but they have what they call a drain layers license. So anytime you touch water, sewer lines, you got to have a drain layers. So you apply, it goes before their board, they approve it once a month, and you give them a $500 bond, and I think it's a $500, and the annual license start is $250. And then you have to get a bond to them for $1,000. And then if you have a bigger project, they'll tell you you need a bigger bond based on your project, which, again, like I said, the bonds are there for a reason, in case something happens, and you don't go back, or whatever happens, happens. So the city of Nashua does, that's it. They don't have, if I do, if I do 10 jobs in the city, I don't have to go back each individual time. I go there then, and that's it. And then they pull it off. So my security deposit, that's what they draw from. So they draw all my inspection fees off of that. And then at the end of the year, you can either say, keep it in there, and here's the rest to make up my new $500 for this year, or, nope, I want it back, I'm done working or, nope, I want it back, I'm done working in Nashua.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. This was really helpful.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, item thirty-three B, please.
It's a resolution repurposing the sum of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents from CIP number eighty-eight, the two thousand seventeen CO2 tank and control replacement sub-project for use on CIP three forty-seven, the two thousand eighteen solar power improvement sub-project.
Thank you very much.
As a counsel, the water treatment plant is looking to replace existing electrical services at two tank locations with solar panels and batteries. This green project will reduce the need for electrical services, reduce expenses to the water plant budget and remove long electrical line services, city responsible for clearing and maintaining. Transferring the funds from the CO2 project will allow the water treatment plant to complete the energy savings work benefiting both the rate payer and the environment.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item thirty-three C, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of thirteen thousand dollars for CIP five fifteen, the golf course winter recreation improvements project for the purchase of a track cross-country ski trail groomer and accepting the sum of thirteen thousand dollars as a donation for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Well said. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item thirty-three D, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of ten thousand dollars for the purchase of water-related catastrophe equipment and accepting the sum of ten thousand dollars in grant funding from the Department of Safety State Home Plan Security Grant Program for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Our members of the council, there's no requirement for any matching city funds to be obligated for this purchase.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item thirty-three E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of sixty-six thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents from the impact fee fund as a transfer to the general fund to offset debt service costs and reduce general fund use of fund balance by sixty-six thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Any questions for the manager? Open the public hearing on this item, and anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase. First item, number thirty-four. Remind you, this was, held hearings both in February and March for action this month. Madam Clerk?
It's a resolution authorizing the annual appraisal of real estate at market value per RSA seventy-five eight dash B.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
With approval? Second.
Motion made, second to approve this item or is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion's adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty-five, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title One, General Code, Chapter One, Government Organization, Article One dash Five, Fees, Fines, and Penalties.
Thank you very much.
I, I should note that it is together with non-ordinance fees too.
Thank you. Anybody have a motion? Anybody have any questions, comments?
I have a question. I'd, I'd like to ask Deputy City Manager, if I had to come up, if that's appropriate?
Yep.
And also bring the city engineer.
Good evening, welcome. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you. Thank you both for taking my questions. In part of your deliberations on this, were any of the items that Ms. Raymond brought up new to you? I mean, did you hear anything for the first time this evening that you haven't heard before?
Uh, no. No, it's all pretty familiar. And a lot of it is, is why we're trying to come up with a better system. The billing is an issue. Right now, we take, we estimate what we think the inspection will take. Oftentimes, that's an overestimate, so we take a deposit and then, and then the inspector spends a certain amount of time out there and then we bill based on how much time the inspector spent. And oftentimes then, it may be, it may be many months later, once the project is done, and we then issue a refund and, and, and then the billing can take, can take a fair amount of time as well. The intent of this was not to increase the cost for contractors and developers. For example, right now, if you go, if you're looking for a utility connection permit and the utility connection, part of it is in the street and part of it is on private property, we would charge a hundred and sixty dollars for the excavation, for the utility connection on private property and then two hundred and twenty dollars for the excavation in the right of way today. So what we're proposing is actually combining that. It would be one fee, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, so instead of the three hundred and eighty-dollar fee for utility connection permit for a project like that, it would be two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And invariably, they take two or three hours. Sometimes they take, you know, four, five, or six hours. So the tier one is based on three hours of labor, two and a half hours of, and this is, you know, this is kind of how we came up with the number, two and a half hours of inspection labor and a half hour of, of admin. However, if it, it could go up to five hours and we're not going to then push it into the tier, the tier two, eight hour of inspections. And so most of those excavations, those smaller excavations and utility connections are less than five hours of labor. Sometimes it gets complicated and things happen and we end up being out there for eight hours. Sometimes it even gets, gets more complicated and we're out there for twelve hours. And so, you know, we have a, we will have the ability to make some decisions in the field and, and since this will be, this is really preparing for it to all go online or someone actually provides their credit card number up, upfront, we will be able to make the decision at the end of the day whether to charge a tier one or a tier two or even a tier, you know, tier two and tier three with some overtime. So we won't actually do, finalize the charge until the end of the day when we, when it's determined, you know, what it took.
Quick follow-up. Thank you.
Sure.
The, the issue of having a new bond for every project, have you talked about that? As to whether or not to have one, one bond?
We, we often do blanket bonds. We do a blanket bond with Liberty Utilities. We have a two hundred thousand dollar bond with them and they let us know upfront what projects they're doing. And sometimes it will take eight months to do all their projects and that two hundred thousand dollar bond will cover it. We are preparing for twenty-seven miles of underground conduit with Breeze Line this year and they have already provided us with a five hundred thousand dollar bond. So, so with the complicated, with contractors that are doing a lot of work, we often do a blanket bond.
And that is available, excuse me, that is available to private contractors that are smaller?
Absolutely.
This Raymond's business could?
If they were able to provide us with, with a clear idea of what projects they're doing, you know, for an extended period of time, we would definitely consider a blanket bond. But oftentimes that's, you know, they don't know upfront.
Sure.
Right?
So if I could, just, that's the critical distinction is that when you're dealing with a company like Liberty, they have a fixed program and their one purpose is to get into those gas lines and fix those gas lines. I, I think in the case of, of Raymond Construction, they could have a dozen, two dozen, two dozen different clients during a, a construction season, perhaps more. And so there could be a variety of things. So it would be a challenge to say, here's a blanket bond because I don't know if even they would know all, all their work for the, for the full construction season. Maybe they would and we could work through that. But it definitely is more complicated for the city side to make sure that we're protected because we're trying to protect the taxpayer-paid infrastructure of the city's roads.
Okay. Also, every bond needs to clearly describe what the work is for. And, and so if we need to recall the bond, we need to know upfront what that project is. For example, a couple of years ago, we, we pulled a bond for an excavation that, and the contractor went belly up. If they had a blanket bond for five different projects and then went belly up, but it was only this one, it would be a challenge to figure out how to recall that bond and what the amount would be.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, you have one, then Counsel, quick.
Thank you. Could you explain what, what is entailed in, in an inspection that takes three hours or eight hours or ten hours?
So.
Generally, generally, obviously.
Right, so if it's a, let's say it's a utility connection, the contractor will schedule it upfront and, and define in the utility connection permit, they have to provide a sketch as to show, you know, where the work exactly is going to be. We expect them to be prepared and have all the materials and the parts for the, for the piping and, and get going early in the morning so that it doesn't, it doesn't extend into after hours. And, and that, so they'll, they'll excavate, do the pipe work, backfill, compact all the, all the material back in the, in a trench and then do a, and then, and then do a saw cut and do a careful pavement up to the surface and then actually come back after six months or so and finish the, the pavement, do a pavement restoration.
Follow-up?
So we're not talking about like contiguous hours? We, we are talking about, you know.
That's correct.
One day, maybe another day, another.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor? Has, did you consider the kind of drain layers license that, that was described to us that Nashua does? Which sounds like it's kind of a, to, to a layperson like me, it sounds like it's a one-stop shop. You know, and if, particularly if you can carry over any unexpended funds into the following year.
That, that is definitely something that we have been talking about since the day I arrived and I think, I think even prior. And that, that drain layers license, one advantage is it, it, you need to have certain qualifications to be, to have that drain layers license, not everybody has it. And so it prevents kind of that fly-by-night contractor who's never worked in the city before who doesn't maybe have references from just doing a fly-by-night effort and, and then, you know, what we thought maybe is a two-hour project ends up being an eight-hour project. So, so it really would provide, make sure that we know the qualifications of everybody working in the city. That takes some policing. It would be great to do whether that is tied to a particular bonding arrangement. I'm not aware that Manchester does that and that's something we would look into. But the, what's important is that the bond, whatever it is, cover that, that work that needs to be repaired afterwards. And oftentimes, it's an excavation that settles. And then they need to come back, you know, the next year because it, because it's actually, any excavation needs to have a warranty of two years. That bond is a two-yeared lifetime. So if within two years that, that trench is settled and it needs to be repaved and recompacted, we need to have enough funds to be able to do that. The bond needs to be able to cover the, the, the work to be redone if the contractor goes belly up in that, in that two-year, two-year time. The, the situation on East Side Drive two years ago where the contractor went belly up, we had a five thousand dollar bond, which is kind of our typical bond, and it ended up costing about eight thousand dollars to fix that. So it's important that the bond be large enough to cover the work and I can't imagine a five hundred dollar bond that's going to cover about ten square feet of pavement.
Counsel, quick. Thank you.
Your Honor, a couple of questions for you. I mean, I certainly understand from our perspective, our fiscal year starts on July first, 2022. Was there any consideration for being in the middle of the construction season when these bids on projects have probably already got out and what the impact is going to be to those businesses?
So the main reason we're here now is because the online permitting system is slated to go live in July. And, and without this type of change, it's going to be really hard for us to go online with a permitting system. Because today, what they have to do is they pay upfront and we do an estimate. And then, and then there's reimbursement afterwards and that's a really hard thing to do online. Whereas, so this, the way we structured it, somebody can actually get the permit, kind of a hundred percent online, pay for it online. And if we're trying to do estimates and deposits for a certain amount of work, that'll be a challenge. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna end up in sort of a transition period because yes, we are taking deposits for, for excavations, utility connections right now. So once July first hits, we're going to have to probably refund those and re-permit a bunch of permits. But yeah, so, you know, it's, I think it's six of one, half and a, half a dozen of the other, whether we do it now or at the end of the year. But if we go live with the online permitting system July first and we're waiting until the end of the construction season to do this, it's going to be a, it's going to be a billing exercise from.
Just as a comment, it does sound like it's a billing exercise now.
It is.
And I don't, I don't feel the confidence that it's going to be corrected. Yes, just to buy it.
So just to that first point, so our fees, our city fees across the board adjust July one. You've seen those, they come through for your approval. You typically, like in April this year, we have a fee committee, so it's a little different the schedule, but typically those fees will change July one. So there is a variety of fees that change July one and a lot of those fees are tied to a lot of different projects that people may or may not be bidding on. And that, I would imagine that's the same for communities across the country based on their fiscal year. So while we didn't, so we didn't technically account for the construction season. I mean, we, we've never done that. And I, and like I said, I don't think cities operate that way typically. I, I don't anticipate that this is going to cause a lot of commotion. Will it be, there's definitely going to be a learning curve for sure because this is a new system, the last one we had for twenty years and this one is, we're going to start up now. So would it be surprising that we're back here next year? For example, we say we need to tweak some of this? Of course. You know, that may be what, what happens. But I, I think it's a system that, the system we have today is definitely broken and we're trying to find a way that makes sense for folks. And I think our staff will try to do what's logical and not overcharge people. If there's a benefit of the doubt, we're going to give that to the, to the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
So a lot of what I heard was concerns about additional costs and dollars being passed on to, to the property owners and builders. How much additional revenue is this going to raise, this change? How much is this going to raise for the city?
The goal is to actually bring in the same amount of revenue. So our, our goal is not to actually increase revenue with this, but, but actually make everything more efficient.
So, so the, so while I see contractors dramatically increasing prices to homeowners and businesses for their work, you're not actually asking for more money?
We have the same billing rate and our, and these fees are based on, on eighty-five dollars an hour. So, you know, right up till, we're only charging essentially three hours of labor, right up to eight to, to five hours of labor. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make some on some, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose money on others, just like we do today.
Thank you. Counsel, Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the question I have is, I caught from the testimony earlier that the, the person who comes and checks on the, you know, the inspector that comes and checks isn't there the whole, they're not there for eight hours or five hours, they're going to look at other places. Are they being billed for five hours that the person actually isn't there five hours? Is that how it's working?
So that's a really great question. Many projects, like our inspectors will be working on two or three projects in the same day, sometimes four or five. And, and so they may spend some time on the project and then go check on another project depending on how, how it's going. If there's, if they, if they feel the contractor is doing a good job and they can step away for a little while, they'll go check on another project. So if somebody has, has applied for an eight-hour project, a tier two project and the inspector only spends three hours out there and we're, and they will be tracking their time every day, they, we won't charge them for a tier two, we'll charge them for a tier one. Likewise, if they apply for a tier one and it goes eight hours, we can then charge for a tier two instead of a tier one. And, and also, like Liberty Utilities will work, they'll do a pipe, a pipe replacement that will last a week or two. And, and so what we're suggesting to them is, okay, let's plan on multiple days of tier one. They're going to be working all day long, but we're not going to spend all day, every day with them. So, so they will be paying for multiple tier ones, which is not based on five hours, it's based on three hours of labor, which is typical about, you know, when somebody's working an eight-hour day, that's about how much time our inspectors would spend on the site. So just because they're working eight hours doesn't mean we're going to charge them the tier one, the tier two, the eight-hour fee.
Thank you.
So it sounds like the system works really well for your larger companies, you do Breeze Line, et cetera. How does it really work for, you know, your smaller, you know, you heard like manufactured housing, you heard, you know, I, I watched one on Depot Street where, you know, a restaurant was trying to get reopened and they had to open up their own house and such. How does it work for those folks?
Well, it works the same for the big companies today as it does for the, for the smaller outfits. Our inspectors are onsite and they keep a log sheet of how much time they spend on. Our inspectors are onsite and they keep a log sheet of how much time they spend onsite. And then, and so the contractor will get billed for how much time they spend. Similarly, on the smaller project, if the contractor puts in a utility connection permit and we spend three hours out there, they get charged for three hours. But there's also about an hour or two of billing or more associated with every one of those little permits. And that's really, that's really what we're trying to get away from is the, is, because every one of those hours gets put on a timesheet, or even a half hour, half hour here, half hour there, it goes, put on a timesheet. And then it, and it all gets combined together into one invoice. And about a month later, or two months later, that invoice gets generated with a tremendous amount of effort from both finance and our fiscal supervisor, and the invoice goes out. And so we, we're just, the amount of time that we, that we spend, the city spends generating each one of those invoices is probably about as much time as the guys actually spend onsite.
So, can I just go? So, um, how many years has it been since, you seem to be talking with a great anticipation for this new computer system? And how many years has it been that we've talked about this system?
My entire career with the city of Concord.
So how many years does that be?
It's been 15 years, this.
15 years we've been talking about this system?
Well, we're talking about.
And we're ready to go live and join.
So just to be clear for the public who's watching, so yes, we have the mayor, you do bring this up pretty regularly, so we have.
I do, every, every year, actually.
Exactly, it's good. So we've had, we've had a permit for the council, we've had a permit tracker system, electronic system, that is probably 20 to 25 years old at this point. You can imagine if you had a computer from 25 years ago and how well it would be working today. That's the system that we've operated on. It does allow pretty primitive checking of permits online, things like that. What the council provided for us was funding several years ago to actually acquire a robust software system that is online-based and allows for credit card payments, things like that. And that has taken an enormous amount of time because there is 20 years of legacy data. And trying to convert 20 years of legacy data into a new software package is, it's like climbing Mount Everest three times over. And so that is what's taking us this long, long amount of time to get done. There's a team working on that, they work regularly every week, they meet twice a week to try to get this done. So the goal we have right now is July 1, that's the date that we are working towards. And we've done three passes of all our data to get it over. Still not 100% there, so we'll keep plugging away, but that's our goal.
What's the total price tag we've paid for the system?
I'd have to get that to your next meeting, Mayor, I don't.
Probably extra in the budget, so just curious. The last thing is, you talked about pulling a bonds when, so when things settle and you have to go back and. How, how does, how often those reviewed? I mean, for instance, on Depot Street in front of the cigar place and the restaurant, there was a hole that was dug up by one of the utilities that year after year after year never was addressed until I think you could probably lose a small child in the hole, it was so deep. You know, eventually they came back and they kind of did an okay job. But how do, how do you follow up with those inspections to see whether they should do that? So that the citizens actually get the quality street that we all pay for?
So we, and I'm not sure how things were tracked before I arrived here four years ago, but, but I can assure you now, we have a spreadsheet that, that, that tracks all of the bonds and the excavations and the duration of each bond. And, and six months prior to that bond expiring, we go and check on that excavation to see what, what condition it's in. And, and will, do we then, if there's a problem, we'll reach out to the contractor and have the contractor address the issue. In, as far as I know, the bond that we pulled two years ago, that was the first bond this city has pulled on any excavation permit. So we have a good track record and most of the contractors are on the up and up. And, and they notice, you know, and they, it's pretty obvious when there's a problem with a, with a, with a pavement patch. But yes, there are some, there are some old pavement patches out there. My fiscal supervisor right now is working with legal to resolve, we had about 200 old bonds, some dating back 10-plus years, that, that we, resolving many of them have expired and, but they were never actually officially closed. So she's just finishing up the last couple dozen this week, so.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understood you to say that these are manual logs of time that our inspectors are keeping. And is the new system going to be a digital timesheet? Is that included in this software package that we have?
It is included in the software package.
So they'll be able to punch in, punch out on their phone, it will go to billing, and it will streamline that system?
Absolutely, that's, that's our hope. Currently, the, the project tracker software we have is, is an access database, you know, it's really.
I'm dying over here, but thank you.
And you can query bonds in that, that gives you the age of the bonds.
If you know SQL.
But you still, you have to know the, the, the name of the bond holder or the project. It's, it's very antiquated.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Do we have a motion or further discussion?
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, approved, any discussion? Seeing none, ready for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's about the most reluctant I have heard in a while. Motion's adopted. Madam Clerk, item 36, please.
It's a resolution repurposing the sum of $31,998.90 from CIP 88, Tank and Tower Control Replacement Subproject, for use on CAP 347, the 2018 Solar Power Improvement Subproject.
Thank you very much. Is there any, is there a motion?
Approval.
Motion made, seconded, approve item 36. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 37, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $13,000 in the CIP 515 Golf Course Winter Recreation Improvements Project for the purchase of a track cross-country ski trail groomer and accepting the sum of $13,000 as a donation for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, approve this item, is there any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
It's Council Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to correct the report that is accompanying this. I was on RPAC at the time and the report states that RPAC and Beaver Meadow Committees both approved the three-phase plan. RPAC did not receive a presentation on the three-phase plan. They received a presentation only on the snow groomer. That was in October of 2020. And it was for $50,000, not 50%. So I am not opposed to receiving these funds, I just wanted to correct the report.
Well, Mr. Manager, why did David Gill write the way he did then? If that's, if this is incorrect information? Let's Laura Bright come up and talk to that. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
How are you, buddy?
So perhaps you could talk a little bit about the report, because Council Brown.
Sure. So I do have the, it was a Zoom meeting at that time. I do have the presentation here, and the three phases were reviewed. The vote that we did, or the RPAC supported, was just focused on phase one, but we did discuss all three phases at that time. And it was an oversight that David, when he wrote the report, and I think that he has stated that he is fine to adjust that if need be.
Okay. Council Brown, is that okay?
That's, that's fine. If it was Zoom, I mean, I, it was a.
Yeah, we do have the presentation. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so, and it was during COVID and, and, but I just wanted to correct that it was the different date. And we had only voted on the one item.
Different date?
It was, the report says October, says 2019, it was actually 2020.
Oh, I didn't know about that part. I only knew about the, the vote was the minutes due reflect that we voted for phase one, but we did review all three phases.
What's the date on the?
I had October 20th, 2020. Is that what you had?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Okay, would you mind actually just, is that your only copy?
Yeah, it's just the printout from the Zoom slides.
But is that your only copy?
It's the only copy I have here, but I have it at, at the office, so.
Would you mind sharing that with a clerk, just so that she can put it right?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council Pierce.
Procedural question, so for the record, will there be an amended report?
No, the way I, the way I took it is, we were just having a discussion. I think we heard, we heard the answer, I think it sounds pretty clear to me, unless somebody who needs to make some further motion. But I was, personally, I was satisfied with the explanation. I'm glad you brought the question, I'm glad you brought the answer. Council Jim.
Your Honor, it wouldn't be reasonable to assume that our discussion and Council Brown's point and Parks and Recreation's response will be captured in the minutes of this meeting?
That's why I asked for the.
Part of the public record.
That's why I asked for the presentation, so that we all can put it together. Okay. Yes?
Just one, thank you, Your Honor. Just on a more positive note, I just want to recognize the $55,000 in private donations that were raised. I think that's substantial and credit to that organization. So I just wanted to make that, make that known publicly.
We do have a motion before us, it's been duly seconded, are any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With that, has received an necessary two-thirds and a motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you just share that with a clerk, that'd be great. Oh, thank you so much, appreciate it. Way ahead of me.
Watch your eyes.
Madam Clerk, item 38, please.
It's a resolution appropriating a sum of $10,000 for the purchase of water-related catastrophe equipment and accepting the sum of $10,000 in grant funding from the Department of Safety, State Homeland Security Grant Program.
Leave approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, approve item 38. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 39, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $66,147.38 from the Impact Fee Fund as a transfer to the General Fund to offset debt service costs and reduce General Fund use of fund balance by $66,147.38 as an offset for this purpose.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, approve this item, is there any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have received an necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Okay, that completes our public hearings. We have no reports, no new business, unfinished business. We have one more meeting, I believe, at the Rules Committee, and so that will be brought back. So do we have any comments or requests from the council? Mayor Brodtem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to remember former City Councilor Catherine Rogers, who passed away on Sunday. For those of you who didn't know Catherine, she was a true public servant to the city. And she, I first met her when she was City Councilor. She served as City Councilor, she served as State Representative. She was also County Commissioner, and she was also County Attorney. She was very dedicated to her issues, especially to animals, women's health care and unions. But she was also very, very dedicated to the city. She was always a state representative that I know I could count on to listen to city issues and hear the, hear the concerns of the city with different legislation that was going through the State House. She was, I believe, she was, she was born in, I believe, longtime resident of Concord. Grew up in Concord, left and went away to college and came back to serve the city. I think we were all very fortunate to have someone like Catherine, who always fought and stood up for beliefs and just was always true to her core. So I will miss her.
Thank you. Who else? Council Pierce.
I just would like to remind the council and the public that tomorrow at 3:30, April 12th, the Outside Dining Committee will be meeting once again to discuss issues and some of the feedback we've had. So you're all welcome to join us if you'd like. It's 3:30 at the conference room on the second floor of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Short, no one else? Okay. I know that our Mayor Brodtem covered it, but I wanted to talk a little bit about Kathy Rogers as well. Kathy was actually one of my favorite people. We sat in those two seats over there for 10 years next to each other. And in those days, we had a meeting before a regular scheduled meeting. It was a, you know, planning meeting and then we'd have a regular meeting. And in this seat here was Mayor Verneau, and we drove him crazy. Then Mayor Donovan was here and we had so much fun sitting over there. It was great because your backs were kind of to the audience, so you could probably get away with a lot more things. I will admit this now, we played games over there to talk about the audience. I picked on her because she had the long fingernails and she would, she was one of the first ones to bring a computer to the council and to type away and hear the click, click, click. But I have to tell you, and then we eventually ran against each other. And we ran for mayor against each other. And I often said, and I still believe to this day, it didn't matter who won, whether it was she or I, that the city was going to be in great hands with whoever was, was sitting here. I was a real privilege to know Council, I'm still gonna call her Kathy, Council Rogers. She was tireless, tenacious, she was a voice of the underdog, she was a voice of reason. She was, she had such a passion for this city, having grown up here and gone to public schools here. She was truly a champion, a warrior for this city and for many, many causes. So I will deeply miss her. I am really glad she was my friend. And so, thank you for listening. Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to say? No, Your Honor. All right. So with that, we do have a couple items that have been removed from consent. The first is item 18, Madam Clerk.
It's a report and recommendations, it's from Council Kretovic, on behalf of the Ad hoc Gully Hill Road Committee. And it was pulled from consent by Councilors Nian and Brown.
Okay, I think it was actually Councilor Mattson, and is that not correct?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Did you pull this item?
I did not.
Okay, since Council Nian is on here, Council Brown.
Thank you very much. And I just want to preface this by saying I enjoyed working with my fellow councillors, Councilor Bouchard and Councilor Kretovic on this committee. It was too short, I felt, it was, we only met twice. And this was a really important piece of property. I know that I am in the minority of, on this vote. But as a member of the Conservation Commission, I just want to recognize that whenever a lease ends, historically, they have always gone out to an RFP for any property, any agricultural property. So I know that is not the recommendation, but that is what the Conservation Commission and actually Council Todd, I don't know if you have any comments regarding that, but that is what the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Chris Tardif, has said, has typically happened. And I think this piece of property is very important because it is really the Central Park of Concord, a central green. If you look at it geographically, it has great access to folks on the heights. We're looking at revitalizing that whole area. This is an opportunity for us to really consider other opportu, other options that can bring our community together. One item that I had brought before was, before the committee, was possible community gardens. Talked about it with the Conservation Commission. It would not need to pull very much land from the overall property, 65 and 1/4 acres, two to four acres for community gardens. The Conservation Commission had felt that it's important to keep this in agricultural land. The Conservation Commission had felt that it's important to keep this in agricultural land. Community gardens do still serve that purpose. If this goes out to RFP, which I would recommend, I would like there to be an option that the city retains the right within 90 days or at any time with a 90-day notice to modify two to four acres of that property for other agricultural use. Because community gardens do require a lot of management and it's nothing that we should rush into, but I would like to see that we consider that thoughtfully. I do believe that a long lease is a great idea because farmers really need to grow the soil. They are having problems with the soil on Birch Street and NHTI, and this is categorized as prime agricultural soil. So a longer lease is definitely a better idea. I'm in favor of that, but there are other groups besides the current farmers that are very interested in this. And one is the Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success, and they have leased other property and they really help other, they help refugees make something with farmland. Right now, we're leasing this property at $25 an acre. At the Birch Street Community Gardens, they lease out 25 by 50 square foot plot for $15. If we leased out, if we created three acres of community gardens, it would pay almost the same amount as is currently paid by the farmer per year. $1,500 for three acres of community gardens, and that would still leave 61 and 1/4 acres for a farmer. So I would just like the council to consider putting that option in, an RFP, not happening right away, but giving us the option to do that. Because it is, it's, public transportation is accessible at that site. It's a mile away from a lot of our residents who might not have access to green space, and green space is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the council, the first meeting that Gully Hill Committee met, we had three considerations that we would provide the current farmer with another lease extension. We could recommend an RFP or bid be issued to gauge the marketplace for farming tenants. Or we could recommend that the farming lease just be allowed to expire. What I'm hearing from Counsel Brown is that the Conservation Commission advised her that this had to go out to RFP. Now, I don't want to dispute that. I know Counsel Nian is not here. He did want to pull this item and it was specifically to talk about two things. One of which is in our report, we talk about an observation deck. The, we did hear from the birding community, there is a large number of species that participate in the area around the river, around the tree line and in the cornfields. And they actually thought an observation deck in that area would actually draw attention to the river and be able to be a learning opportunity for the wildlife that's there beyond the butterflies and the bees, some of the smaller creatures as well. The way the report reads today, which was his question, is that it kind of sounds as though the city would lead the effort on that when the reality is, is that the city would like to partner with somebody that may be interested in doing something of a platform and a learning opportunity, a kiosk, something. We wouldn't take the lead, but we would certainly consider it a future date, a pavilion, something in that area for that education piece. He just wanted to make clarification that the report is that not the city leading this effort, but looking for a public-private partnership in that regard. With regards to the RFP, he did also have concerns about this going out to an RFP and would like the council's consideration of that effort. I would say that on behalf of the committee, the people that came and spoke with us, particularly the farmers, were pretty adamant, yeah, this is high-grade agricultural land, some of the best in the state. And over the last several years, there have been 800 dairy farms in the state and we're down to 80. 80. 80 acres or 80 plots of land to generate corn for our dairy farmers. Our dairy farmers in the local community here, they feed weeks and hood. And so we're talking about cutting off our own dairy supply in the city. And the most important thing that we heard from the farming community is that we are the stewards of this land. We, the city, and we're not doing a good job. We are falling short. And part of it is that we have not allowed any farmer to invest in this property so that it actually could be a good stewardship. Their testimony was that this needed to be the 65 acres of land. And they did often say, it was, I think Mrs. Morrell spoke most profoundly about it. A community garden at this location would be great, with the exception of they're going to bring pesticides that are not monitored like a farmer is monitored because it's a commercial agricultural site. And why would the city do that when Sycamore, just two miles away and on a public transit line, has expansion area and they're investing $8,000 in an irrigation system? Why would we compete with another organization that is providing the same service? They were really adamant that the 65 acres remain intact. So while we might want to take this out to RFP, I think that we need to think very seriously about who's going to take over that land. Are we going to now become stewards to a community garden and compete with Birch Street and compete with Sycamore? Are we going to be the overseers of that? And I don't think that we're prepared for that. But at the same time, there are other properties that we have in the city that if we wanted to do that, we could, and it doesn't have to be at this prime agricultural location. It could be elsewhere. The RFP, the lease agreement that we were talking about, is a five-year lease with the potential of four renewable leases. That's what we're looking at. So in five years' time, we can reevaluate this again if we have the need for community gardens. For my personal opinion, I feel the most underserved area of this city is in Ward 8 over by Manchester Street. And if we could find a two to four-acre plot of land in that area to help this portion of our community, we would truly, truly be providing a good service in our community to our new Americans, to our lower-income residents of the city. So I would respectfully ask if we are going to send this out to an RFP that we would put a parameter on it that it is commercial, agricultural, 65 of the continuous acres and not to be divided at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Bouchard.
I would support Counsel Kretovic's parameters for an RFP. I would also ask that we send this to FPAC, to the Finance Committee, for them to review the numbers. But we did hear from groups, community garden groups, the conservation, the farmers, and, you know, and what we heard is, this is true, this is some of the, probably the best land in the state of New Hampshire. And to keep it continuously farming is not only smart, but I think it's also, as we've seen in the pandemic, how quickly things can change, that we would have farmland that if we ever need to grow food for the city of Concord to supplement, we have it. The second with Counselor mentioned, that there are dairy farms. And the dairy farms do in this area, we're very fortunate that they do. Their product goes to Hood's Milk, which is in Concord, which employs, I don't know how many people now. I think at one time it was 50. I don't know how many it is now. So it's part of our economic wholeness of the city. We have the farmers growing on the land. We have their milk going to Hood's Milk, which then goes out to the stores. And I personally, when I'm in like a grocery store and I see Hood's Milk, you know, you get a little smile thinking that could have come from a local cow. So I also, and we heard also when the community gardens, they take a lot of management. The farmers need the 65 acres to make farming the land viable and profitable. And they also spoke about when other people are on the land, that they don't respect the farmland. And it's not that they don't respect it. Sometimes they don't understand if the farmland doesn't look like it's planted. And they said, oh, we can walk on it. Well, walking on it is, could be, it doesn't look like it's planted, but it is. Or you're trampling on the area where they're going to be seeding and having different people with the community garden, which is a great idea, but it's not a great idea there. Because there'd be different people, each with their own plant, each with their own plots, doing different things. Having windmills, they were concerned about items, the farmers were concerned about items being left out and other unintended consequences of happening that would affect the farmers farming the land. And one thing about farming this land that is so prime, I learned while listening to the two meetings, was when you farm the land and you take something out of it, whether it's corn or whatever, you got to know what to put in it. You just can't keep farming land or the nutrients in that land no longer is the prime land that we respect. And so I would, and just to be, you know, a capital city, to have this farmland right by the city within sight, I think is a great asset for the city. And especially when we start doing, get the walking trail done where people can walk and, you know, see the farmland. Part of the report was to have informational signs, the history of farming in Concord. What's happening at this site? What kind of birds can you see? So as you're walking by, you get a whole picture of the city of Concord. I highly support keeping the 65 acres because that's what works for whether it's the current farmer or the next farmer. I support having the long-term leases. The lease mimics another lease that we have in another area of the city so the farmers have stability and then they invest in the land. And I think, I hope the council will accept the report with the parameters of the RFP that Counsel Kretovic asked and that we do send it to FPAC just to review the numbers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to touch on what Counsel Bouchard mentioned, I'm in favor of accepting the report as well. I do like the idea of a five-year lease with an option because, not necessarily because of farming, but because I can envision a mixed use of that area, particularly as the Riverwalk is developed. I can envision some tasteful, respectful, commercial development along the river that complements farming. But to exclude that at this point, I think would be a mistake. So I'd like the idea of preserving what we have for five years and then exercising that option again in five years. I did have one question of someone. So when that additional five-year extension comes due with the farmer or whoever leases it has that option, that would be contingent on council approval? It would not be automatic? Is that correct?
What was the manager?
In the past, that's my jurisdiction. But if you decide you wanted to come back in the next five years, then you can come back in the next five years.
Right, and I like the idea of revisiting it five years. And I can just, I envision as that Riverwalk expands, it could be a real special spot where both uses complement each other. Would have to be done carefully in a respectful way, but I think it would really open it up to a lot of folks. So I like just preserving our options going forward at this point.
Counsel Jim.
Thanks, Your Honor. I think this is a great and robust discussion. I admire Counsel Brown's passion. Reminds me of myself in my first term when I was trying to get us to uplight the trees on Main Street. That went down in flames. I still would like to do it. On the other hand. You heard it.
Quite a segue.
One color.
Oh, we can change the colors. Anyway. But at the same time, at the same time, my wife's family is a farming family, not in this state, and they do raise corn, but they also raise cotton and soybeans. And I know how tough a farmer's life is. I know how tough and how close to the line they run their business. I remember one of the first things my mother-in-law told me was that the first thing that she learned when she was a farmer's wife was that there are only two kinds of rain, too much or too little. And I think that says it all about the way that farmers try to eke out a living. In New England in particular, we have been losing our dairy farmers at an alarming rate. And this has to do with the cost of property, the cost of leasing property, the markets. There are a variety of issues. But for that reason, I do support, you know, leasing this on a five-year basis to a commercial dairy farmer. I think that, you know, we do need to support our new American population in a variety of ways. I think that the concept of another community gardening plot is, you know, worth consideration. But for this plot of land, I think the best use at this juncture is to continue to use it for commercial farming, specifically to raise feed corn for our dairy farmers. So for that reason, I'm going to support the committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, can I just clarify that the report is five acres with five four-year renewables? Four five-year renewables. Sorry. Thank you. Because it's being echoed and that's not what the recommendation is.
Counsel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I also am in agreement with Counsel Kretovic's RFP proposal provisions. My recollection, adding a bit to Mayor Protem's, Bouchard's comments on this, is that when I was on the, when I was council representative, the Conservation Commission, and this issue came up, one of the other factors for the farmers was that they were not able to maintain the land probably to the way that they would really ultimately like to see it because the investment of lime and other nutrients that they would need to add to the soil, it wouldn't work for them. And the cost would be just, cost prohibitive for them to do that when there are unknowns. So farms are just like, or businesses just like anywhere else. They'd like to eliminate those unknowns. This, having a larger, a longer-term potential lease agreement with a farmer, I think, would eliminate that concern. And I think that along with that is also their concern with other users on that farmland. That that also throws an additional wild card into the mix that they're not comfortable with. So again, I agree with Counsel Champlin's comments about our efforts to continue to help our Americans and other communities that would like to take advantage of options for potential markets, green space where they could actually grow their own produce. But I think that ultimately, this is probably best kept farmed as it has been in the past years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. So I'm just going to run down my list and maybe the committee members can answer. So I heard Counsel Kretovic say that the committee was posed with three options. I was curious how those three options were decided upon as the outset of the committee for the decision points to be made, because it sounds like there was further discussion had among the committee. So I want to know how we got to starting at three different options versus starting with a broader conversation. The second is, it sounds like people feel pretty strongly that having farmland in a prime spot in our city is important, and I agree. I'm curious how many people think that residents really understand that's farmland there versus just overlook it or see it as a field because it's not, it's not a community garden or vibrant space. I don't think that a lot of people actually recognize it as that. I think you have to kind of know what it is. I don't think that I buy into that the community garden would bring pesticides. Actually, a lot of, particularly indigenous farming practices are organic, and I don't think that the city would have to allow pesticide use on that land, especially if it were to harm adjoining property and uses. So I don't think that that is something that we should necessarily, you know, put a stake in the ground that that would be harmful because the reality is it may not actually be an issue or we could set up guidelines to make it not be one. I'm confused why a community farming would create unwanted traffic, but an observation deck and inviting community members in for birding doesn't raise the same concerns. deck and inviting community members in for birding doesn't raise the same concerns, because to me, obviously, a community garden would have a different type of foot traffic and footprint, but that's still having people in the property. So I'm confused as why that hasn't been a concern raised as well. I'd like to know, I heard in the conversation, that the farmers need sixty-five acres, and I'm curious if that's actually true, or if they only had sixty-two acres of that property to begin with, if that would still be a prime property for them to use. Three acres doesn't seem like that much of a difference to me. We are talking about a pretty lengthy potential lease, five years to twenty-five years. That's a long time. Sounds like there's been some unique ideas to invest in that property or re-envision it in different ways, and that I'm not sure that that got the full breadth of conversation in those two committee meetings. So, I'm also from a farming family, and I remember when this conversation came up on a previous council meeting about making sure farmers had leases that they could depend upon and make the investments in the soil, and that having shorter leases does make that more difficult. So I am thoughtful about the fact to make sure that that happens, and to do that on a timeline that they can plan for. But I think we have a little bit of time here to explore some other options. I would love to see this go to T-PAC. So one of the conversations I heard about community gardens is that there may be some other spots in the community. I think one of the great things about the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee is we talk about bus and walking routes for different city services or amenities. And one of the things about this particular space is individuals who may be more inclined to use it and would have a real need to use it, to sustain their families. You can walk there, you can bike there, there's bus options, right? I'm not sure that that's true about some of the other spaces that we've talked about or that have been discussed. So I would love to see T-PAC take a look at that and make a recommendation. I do think the local foods community is really important as well, if you're gonna have food resiliency. You know, getting people to, to kinda find their roots again in local farming practices is an important thing, and it is such a great location. I'm not sold on that that's what it should be. I would just like to have the, the conversation a little bit more to explore that. So I recommend we send it to a couple of those other committees for review, and come back to discuss it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The answers to all your questions are in the meeting minutes. I wish you'd read them. The observation deck would be on the ops, on, on the outside. Transportation is already set aside on this property for the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. So T-PAC has already weighed in on this issue. As far as impact to the cornfields, they were not looking at impact to the cornfields. That's already taken care of. The reason for the five-year and four, five-year renewal options is it matches other agricultural RFPs that we have within the community. It's to bring uniformity to the agricultural properties we already own and lease. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Did you have your hand up?
I did have my hand up. I, I just wanted to say, I, I would not support sending this report to T-PAC. I think the committee has met, we've, we heard from all interested parties. I do support community gardens if T-PAC wants to have, have an agenda item on community gardens in other places in the city other than this site. That's certainly something that the T-PAC committee can do. But I fully support, from all the testimony we heard, the best use of this land, best use of this land to keep it healthy, is to keep it the sixty-five acres, to keep it farmed by one farm, and not break it up. And I'd like to remind the council again, that this is a local farmer in the greater Concord area that is growing corn for dairy, for milk that is processed in the Concord business. And we, we all, most of us, we all support our farmer's market, where we have local farmers coming. And for farms to exist, they need land. And this is land that will help sustain, whether it's the dairy farmer who has it now or another dairy farmer. So I hope the council will support the committee's report, and that we can move this forward to FPAC, just to make sure all the numbers are correct. Is that a motion?
No.
Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah.
Yep, I believe I have my hand up as a follow-up.
I've been trying to get people who haven't spoken yet, that's all. Counsel Pierce. Everyone's gonna get...
I would ask that we move the question.
Second.
I will not take that motion.
Counsel Rice-Hockins.
Thank you.
Good try, then.
And thank you, Counsel Kretovic. I, I think actually, to your T-PAC point, you actually made my point, that this is a great property that is accessible by public transit and other forms of walking and biking, which is exactly the reason I would like to see it go, a conversation like that go to a committee that is looking at how to make our city more accessible to everyone. I would just add on the local farmer's market piece, I do love the local farmer's market in my CSAs. It is not affordable for everyone. They do take WIC, but growing your own food is much cheaper, much more sustainable for families who need it, and it's a good practice for us to encourage for future generations as well. Again, I'm not sold on which route we should go here. I just think that I would love the council to be open-minded about exploring these options. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel McAdmore.
Just curious, did you guys, anyone talk to the New Hampshire forestry and get their perspective on what they're dealing with at the Clinton Street Gardens?
They came and spoke.
Did they?
Yes.
Okay. Because they have, they are now, they're going to cease management of it, because it has been, it's quite an undertaking, and you can't always control all your gardeners, what they bring in, what they leave. We do sign a contract, we sign a contract, and a lot of that contract is not followed by certain gardeners. And I'm just curious, who will be creating the contracts? Who will be policing this? Because that, if it's not policed, it, it can become an eyesore, it can, you, you might have things on there that you, the farmer would not want on there, and paraphernalia gets strewn about, maybe in the farmer's machinery, I don't know. But I'm just curious with those two questions. Who's gonna place it? Who's gonna create the rules for this?
Good. Counsel Brown?
Sure, I just wanna make a, a few corrections. During the meeting, that question was posed to the farmers, if three or two to four acres, they would, it would still be worthwhile for them to farm, and they said yes, absolutely. And we did actually receive correspondence saying that this is a large piece of property. The current farmers lease other properties that are smaller. And we are talking about farmers, but we're also talking about residents. And this is a, a mile away or less, and they could, they have an opportunity to grow their own food. So I think that's something we should consider. Thank you.
Counsel Bouchard.
Thank you. The question was put out there to the, the farmers, whether they could give up a couple of acres. They did say if they had to, they would, but they would prefer not, that the keeping, the ideal situation would be to keep the land whole. And we also had testimony to the same effect from the New Hampshire Farm Bureau.
Counsel Kretovic. I, I would echo those comments, and what they said is they would sacrifice one to two acres on the outside, upper portion of the farm. They were very specific about where it would be and what size it was, and then they questioned why, when you could expand that same amount of acreage over at Sycamore.
Thank you. Everybody had a chance. Okay, so here's, here's what I've read and what I've heard. First of all, this has been a heck of a robust discussion. I'm, this is, I'm looking forward to our budget time, this is gonna be all... I am amazed that this item has risen to the level of folks within state government. I was actually approached by the Commissioner of Agriculture, who told me to make sure that we kept this land in whole for the, for the farming, commercial farming, for the farmer. Went on to explain to me ad nauseam all of the benefits of farming and that, yeah, okay. I'm just telling you, it is amazing that this little item here on our agenda has actually raised the level of, of folks who are watching us. So I think that goes to the point that everyone, I think, is making, is that we, as a community, all really value agriculture in our community. I know that, you know, in Ward 10, I was always so proud to be able to say that we had three active working farms in Ward 10, and it was, it's just, I mean, I think it speaks to who we are and what we're about. So, the idea that, you know, we all know, and we all kind of have that moment in, in the spring when that manure gets spread, and you're like, oh, hey! It's just a great little reminder that you may be standing in front of a gold dome, but, you know, less than...
It's like the robins coming out. It's like the robins coming out.
That's right. But I, and I, as I said, I think it's, it's something that we all value as a community. It's really important to us. First thing I would say is, Cussonine is, is away this evening. He did ask that this be referred to fiscal policy. I have no problem with that. If you want, if we wanna send it to fiscal policy, I would suggest we do that. That's number one. Number two is, with the committee recommendations, number one, the council should consider offering the current tenants. I'm absolutely hundred percent opposed to this. I don't believe in sole-source contracts. I don't think that's necessarily what the committee intended, but I just wanna be very, very clear. This needs to be an RFP, as like every other RFP we send out. The manager does have the ability to waive RFPs at times, if there's, if there's only one person who responds, you know, that type of thing. But I, I, I do not think that we should follow any other path, other than to put this out to a competitive bid process, which we've done with all the other things. I do believe that a long-term lease, the five-year term with the four, five-year renewal options, is, is a great recommendation behalf of the committee. We did hear consistently from everyone that for the health of the land, for the financial aspects of the farmer, for just the overall benefit of the community, that a long-term lease is really something that everyone strongly considered, and it should be done. So those are the two things. I do believe the, Counsel Brown brought up the Conservation Commission. I have to confess, I'm a little confused as to what the Conservation Commission is, is recommending. I did attend the first meeting, I did not get a chance to attend the second meeting due to conflicts, but the first meeting, I did listen to members of the Conservation Commission. In my recollection, I'm sure I'll be corrected, but my recollection is that those individuals who spoke, I believe there were two representatives here, because the Chair, Chipperson-Tardif couldn't be away, she was away at work, she couldn't be here for that meeting, they did talk about the, the importance of the long-term lease, and if I remember it correctly, they did talk about the importance of the commercial agricultural piece and keeping all sixty-five acres together. Now, it's my understanding, subsequent to that, there was a, a, a meeting that did take place this past Thursday, April 7th, it was a non, well, it was an illegal meeting, because it was not properly noticed, if I might understand correctly. But the Conservation Commission is meeting this Wednesday. I would like to give them the opportunity to actually have it, because that meeting's actually been properly noticed, so give them a chance to actually clarify exactly if there's some confusion. I have no problem with doing that, but just, in the future, I spoke to the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I emphasize how important it is to comply with the right-to-know law, and to make sure that we properly notice all the meetings, and that way we, we don't look like we're meeting in secret. You get the idea. So I give them the opportunity to meet, they're meeting Wednesday, why not? And have, have fiscal policy, since this is a contract, and I would like to see what the input is there. Lastly, it's my understanding that we've all been invited to tour a community garden, and I think it'd be worthwhile for, for those who can make it, to be able to go and tour one that is already existing within the community. I'd be curious, from their perspective, if there's room for additional property necessary, if there's already enough areas covered. I think that Counsel McAdmore asked some really important questions about the, the actual management of community gardens when you do them. Does it actually fit in with this particular land, does it not? So I, I think it's worthwhile to, to take that tour, if you get a chance to, hopefully you could do it before the next meeting. The Fiscal Policy Committee meets on the 18th, so they'll be able to take it up. As I said, the Constitution is Wednesday, the 13th. And I think at the end of the day, it seems like there's most agreement on everything other than whether or not when this goes out for RFP, there should be acreage reserved for potential community gardens. I think that's really what we're down to, unless I missed something. And with sending it off to get the consideration of all the others, we could be back here next month, and I think we'll all do our homework. And, and I apologize, I don't necessarily think it needs to go to T-PAC. I think T-PAC usually has a pretty robust agenda, and I think that...
Keep busy.
And I think that with all the other type stuff, it, it should cover some of your concerns, or, or what they would be able to do, I think would be covered by others, so if you, that's okay. I guess since your hand went up, then I'm done talking. Counsel Kretovic.
No, you can keep talking.
I'll, I'll, I know when you gave me the hook.
I will not be here at the May meeting. And as the Chair of the Gully Hill Committee, I would hope that we would wait until June, which unfortunately continues to put a burden on whatever farmer might take this land over in our conservation or in our RFP.
Well, doesn't, doesn't, is Chair of the Committee, doesn't the lease, if I read the report correctly, the lease goes until the end of the year, right?
That is correct.
So, Mr. Banjo, is that gonna...
Well, I think he, I think what she might be referring to, Counselor might be referring to, is by, you make a decision at the May meeting, they won't have to put together the RFP, you put the RFP out, you advertise, you get the responses back, you analyze, and then you award. So, I mean, you, you know, ideally, you'd wanna do that.
It's a process.
It's a process. You, you wanna, you wanna accomplish that soon, as soon as you can.
So do you think if we took action in June, that a six-month window would be appropriate?
I think that still works.
Think we can get it done in six months?
Well, you're a government, you're slow, but you think six months, we might be able to do it? No, I, no, I'm, no, I just don't know, from the farmer's standpoint, I don't, I, I'd be guessing in terms of, I think you can do it, but I, I just don't know in terms of when, when they're, you know, if you, if you're going to get the lease on that going forward, when do you have to make the decision to, to fertilize? Probably after you pull your crop up, so, what is that, October maybe? So you would think you'd be able to make it work, right?
Well, Mr. Banjo, isn't that true, that if you're the farmer, you're trying to plant, right? And we don't know who's gonna win a competitive process.
Right.
They probably know they're either gonna, gonna farm sixty-five acres, or maybe sixty-three acres, or sixty... So if you're planning your, is that unreasonable?
Well, given the conversation, I think we could talk about this for...
Oh, no, no, we're gonna go back to the engineering after we're done with that.
Exactly. No, I think, I think you can make it work. A month is not gonna make a difference in the whole, in the whole process. But I think there's a lot of pieces, and, you know, and I think you actually might get a number of different, you know, talking to, to plan, you might get a whole bunch of other submittals, you might, versus, you know, one or two. You might get a bunch of submittals.
But I, I didn't wanna get into it, but I will tell you that I have been approached by someone else who considers themselves to be in agriculture. They don't necessarily grow corn for food, but they grow...
Other products.
Right. And they're like, well, should I be excluded from this proposal, this bid, or should I be included as well? So, if you're right...
You can make it as open as possible, but...
Right. Okay. So with that...
I'm confused. Are we, um, just wanna, again, I'm not confused, I'm just trying to follow. So, we, we accept a report with the caveat that it becomes an RFP, right? It goes to FPAC, and the RFP will state that we keep it sixty-five acres for an agricultural purpose. Am I...
I, I think the motion's really simple. We just simply take the report and refer it to fiscal policy. That's it.
Okay, then.
All you need to do.
I second that.
I think, I think Conservation Commission's gonna deal with it on Wednesday as well, so...
Okay. That's my question.
I mean, they already dealt with it once in a...
Twice.
Twice, twice they spoke.
And as a body. I think you do it. So, can I get a motion?
I'm so moved. Second.
The motion is to move to send this report to fiscal policy.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? See, not all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any access?
Just, just throw something out there, just not for discussion, I just wanna, and I don't know what department would look at, would look at this, but there are two large apartment complexes on the heights, Alton Woods and Salisbury Green, and also the Florence P. Hodges Retirement Apartments. They actually provide land for community gardens for their residents, like first come, first served, or something like that. But I don't know if that's something the city can look into, when we have new apartments coming, facility neighborhoods coming to the city to see if there's a possibility of laying out land for... Laying out land for residents to have community plots. I, I don't know how that works, but I think that's an idea in existing neighborhoods that we have that are high density, and maybe they could also look to see if they have a land available for some community plots.
I think, I think it'd be considered an amenity of those projects, and as far as something available to the people living there.
Something to add to.
Looks like we have to talk a whole lot about zoning, so I'm sure we can talk about all of this.
Madam Clerk, if you could read item 25, please.
Yes, it's a report from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee on the scheduled White Park Pool renovation, and it was pulled from consent by Counsel Brown.
Thank you very much. Counsel Brown.
Yes, I personally think this is a great idea. I like everything behind it. However, I, I spoke with David Gill today, and I just asked what kind of neighborhood outreach there was. And there hasn't been. It's really just been discussed, you know, at R-PAC. So I would like to take time to actually reach out to the neighbors, reach out to folks in the community, give them an opportunity to weigh in.
Okay.
So can we?
Well, okay, so here's, here's why I'm pausing, because I'm trying to, I didn't know what direction you were going to go. So it's my understanding that our advisory committee made a recommendation. I took them at their word. If there was follow-up, and somehow now R-PAC needs, they need to pull back on the recommendation from a public input, I'm not sure I understand that. But I would just remind you that this would be a capital budget item. It's in the capital budget now to, to refurbish the pool, not the splash pad. That splash pad would be a change in the capital budget. We do have a night dedicated to the capital budget during our budget process, which, that is a public hearing, which people can come talk about the capital, all the capital project, projects that night. So if there are people in the city, because I think, you know, when you look at where White Park, the current pool, pools from, they pool from people all over this community. It's not really the neighborhood. It is a neighborhood pool, but that is one in particular that pulls from all over the city, because it really is designed for young children. If it's moved to a splash pad, I think you're going to see the same thing. It'll be a citywide kind of area where it's pooled, pulled from. Then after the capital budget, we do a tentative adoption. There's a final public hearing on the whole budget in all. So I appreciate the public input piece. I think there's designed already two full-blown public meetings that the community would be welcome, obviously, and encouraged to come and testify as to what they wish the council to act, how they wish the council to act. In the meantime, if the R-PAC thinks that they need to do some more, well, that's their prerogative, and they, they can do that. They set their own agendas and such. I, I personally have no problem with that. But for me, I would simply approve the item, the report, and the recommendation, and I'll be, one of the first things I look at when I get the budget on, what, the 15th of May?
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere around there?
Yeah.
I'm going to flip right to that capital budget, and I'm going to see what the manager's recommending. So that, I, I appreciate the public input. I think there's sufficient public input, and that can always, if Recreation feels on their own, they do some more, then I strongly encourage them to do that.
I, I'm just, I would prefer to, myself, I, I will vote not to accept just until I, you know, reach out to the community first. I, I would like to, to hear more from folks.
I'm just curious. This is, this is just a curiosity question. When this was taken up by, by the Park and Rec Committee, I think you had the privilege of being serving as the Ward Five.
Yes, yeah.
So what was your experience?
So that was just to, when I was there, we voted to accept additional funds that were left over from the Merrill Park Pool renovation, to look at a splash pad, to kind of come up with a conceptual idea.
So, so if I'm reading page two, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee and their January 20th, 2022, gave their full support to convert the White Park Kitty Pool to a splash pad. So is that inaccurate?
I was not on R-PAC in January 2022.
No, I understand, but I thought I was there, and I think you were there too.
Not in January.
Okay, all right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the report.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion before us. Is there any further discussion? You can unrate for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. And I appreciate you bringing it up, and I strongly encourage everyone who's willing, who wanted to talk about this to come forth. Because it would be the first, and it'll be, it'll be a change. We do have two suspense items on the agenda this evening. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules to take up suspense and suspend?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to take up suspense. One, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item suspense one, please.
It's a report from the senior planner recommending the city manager be authorized to execute four easement deeds with Abbott Road LLC for the installation and maintenance of a new sewer line, a new sidewalk, drainage, and an existing sewer line and new public trail.
Mr. Manager?
Nothing to add, Your Honor. It's simply a housekeeping initiative to accept those easements, which will come to the city as part of the project that was approved by the planning board.
Okay. Any other questions for the manager? Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item suspense two, please.
It's an item to be set for a May public hearing. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager, excuse me, to execute a memorandum of agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation concerning acquisition of discontinued portions of the Northern Main Railroad located between Horseshoe Pond Lane and the Kentucky River for the purposes of developing the Merrimack River Greenway Trail, CIP number 543.
Thank you very much. Can you give a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to set this for the May 9th, 2022, public hearing. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any ayes have it. Concludes our items this evening. Does anybody else have anything to share before we leave? Seeing none, Counsel Todd makes the motion to adjourn, seconded by Counsel Pierce. All in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Have a wonderful week, everyone.